The uh work session for Belt Harbor County and first thing on the agenda is actually a closed session for property negotiations. Uh at this time I'll accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three to discuss the purchase or sale of real or personal property. Do you hear a motion to go into closed session? So move motion by Commissioner Carlson here second. Second by Commissioner Sumner, all in favor say aye. Aye. We will go into closed session next door.
Thank you.
But because it was by a city and by an airport, the airport actually said, wait a second, you can't just necessarily take that land. There are certain rules that when an airplane takes off, it has to have so much room past it. So we worked with the county and yeah, we cut out some of that stuff and the landowner thought it was a good idea. And it worked really well. Plus the rest of it's protected, so it's pretty good. And then, you know, we have some easements as well too, where we fill in holes right there. And we make sure that we're not creating more problems. You know, a lot of times when it comes to management, you got county land, DNR, and you got to get entrance agreements. We're always talking with the county when it comes to acquisitions so that who would it best fit? You know, would this bet fit with the DNR or, and you can kind of look at the land you surround it and say, okay, yeah, that would go with the county or something. Counties get a lot of, from the acquisition, they, a lot of times just from the timber harvest that they get, it's enough to offset any taxes. And we're giving all that information right up front to make an informed decision. So it's kind of the, the way to sum it up is early notification at the beginning and early, and this county has final decision authority at the end. And that's worked out pretty good. Next, the Lake Irving project was something, the MHB donated $50,000 through, through an opportunity. We got some funding through Enbridge. And, you know, there's just kind of the picture on the Ratcliffe property. And I'm not sure how this works. Oh, there's my thing. But I can't really show it. I had a video right there, but it was just a flyover of a drone and something. But we played that at the biennial conference and people were really seeing, you know, how can we do that? And then two years later, we worked with the city of Baxter and got one there as well. So, but you guys were kind of one of the middle or first kickoff of this idea of creating stormwater. We got stormwater retention to help keep the Mississippi or Lake Irving, which is a headwaters lake clean. But we also got some oil spill protection as well, just in case. So it worked out pretty good there. A signage project, this is something that relates directly to you. We created signs on the Mississippi River, enjoy, so the average person could enjoy the three or four hour day trip. And we put them in, tried to put them in high visibility spots and we got a QR code. So there's the one at, that picture right there is 25, County Road 25. There's a beautiful DNR access there, lots of parking and stuff. This is a map of where we've done it in red. You can click on those on our website and it will bring up the map. And then lastly, so there's a blown up picture. We basically, who is this, my pointer? Nope, see, I knew I'd do that. There we go. It's not that. But what is my pointer? Oops, that's not it. And I, oh, here it is. Well, never mind. But anyway, I'll just go through that real quick. It basically says on here, if you didn't know this, where you can come to an access, but where does it end up? Well, you're not going to take time on your phone to figure that out. So we put it right at the access and this says you are here, exit here. And then it says at the bottom there, it's about, it tells you how many miles, but it really tells you how long it will take you to paddle it. Because that's really all you care about. Is it going to take me three? Is it going to take me 10 hours? I don't know, you know? So that's what we did there. We did that. And then lastly, if you look at that QR code, you can scan that and it will follow you down the river, just like Google Maps. You don't need Wi-Fi or anything. So it's a pretty slick app that they, they got there. And so those are some of the things we're doing. And then lastly, I kind of coined the word resource attainment. It's a fancy word to say we paddle the river and then we have a social hour afterwards. Here's from Aiken, it's paddle your glass off. And we have over 100 people that show up to that. And it's just a great way, we, we go down the river, we have a social hour and then a lot of people will go out to eat. And it's just really a great opportunity there. And then we decided to stick economic development because remember when you scan that QR code or download it? We actually get a number on that. So we can track recreation or at least people that have scanned that sign. So if you look at, let's say, you know, a map there and you scan that QR code, I get a timestamp like that. And it says on this date, at this time, somebody in the United States using an Android or iPhone scanned it. And at what time? So I just count those up and I email it to your administrator or to a city or something like that and just say, hey, if you want to use it.
Seven years and then I relocated to Bemidji. Started off at First National as a loan processor and then recently moved over here. So, yeah, I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new employees? All right, we'll move on to the identify future work meeting topics. Anybody have any future work meeting topics they'd like to bring up?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't recall ever seeing a representative from Prime Health or Prime West. I was wondering if they could come in, a representative from each entity and just kind of explain their organization a little bit. I'm still not 100% on both organizations, you know, who they are, what they do, what services they provide, their relationship to the county, et cetera. And I've talked to a few people that, you know, mix up Prime Health and Prime West on a regular basis. So I think just kind of educational piece from those two folks would be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Gould. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the Mississippi Headwaters Board update. Got Tim here and we're running a little behind him, so appreciate if you can talk us into that.
You bet. I only made it. This, I'm Tim Terrell, Executive Director of the Mississippi Headwaters Board. I only got 11 slides, but as I was going through the counties and eight counties, I noticed there's at least one or two commissioners I haven't met before. So this is pretty good timing. And I want to officially invite all of you. You probably got the email out a few days ago to the biennial conference on October 31st this year in Breezy Point, Minnesota. But definitely I'll be hitting you back and give a short review of that. So, you know, basically who is the MHB, the Mississippi Headwaters Board? We're quite unique. We're a regulatory agency, but we have, we do voluntary actions and get grants to do water quality recreational stuff. The counties perceive us as regulatory, but they appreciate our non-regulatory grants we receive as well to help them. And I've got some examples that we've done in Bemidji. And then, but the average citizen, they always think we're a nonprofit. It's just, you know, Mississippi Headwaters, you guys got it. You must be a nonprofit. Well, some of the regulatory powers were actually governmental. And we possess planning and zoning authority on the first 400 miles of the Mississippi River. That goes through eight counties. And everybody asked me, what is that? Okay, so it starts at Itasca State Park and follows the river through eight counties, all the way to Royalton, Minnesota, if you know where Treasure City is on 371. That's kind of where it is. It's really the bottom of Morrison County. But it goes through all those counties and then we have a comprehensive plan. So your environmental service director can follow that. And we're formed from eight county commissioners from eight different counties. What's unique is we're in your zoning orders, but we're also in your one watershed, one plan. So we're working very closely with you on some of that stuff. But there's nothing like the Mississippi Headwaters Board in the entire United States. To have planning and zoning authority, it's pretty unique to have that. So next is, we're just gonna go over some of our programs really quick here. Minnesota Traditions, this is our social media program. We have around 55,000 followers. I mean, we started with aquatic invasive species. And it just ballooned. And what's good? I asked my marketer, I said, well, what's good? And he goes, if you can get over 10,000 followers on a page, you're doing really well because there's millions of pages out there in social media. So it just took off really good and we experienced a 60% increase in engagement. So there's just some numbers we do. You know, how many impressions we sent out, how many people we reached. And we actually created a YouTube page. So for six years, we've been creating content or 30 second videos. We put it all on YouTube. And we let everybody know it's there for free. So you're able, and what's really cool, you can go to the search and you can type in zebra mussels and every single video that we have on Zeb pops up. So we made it really handy for your AIS coordinator for that way. And these are professional ones as well. Our easement and acquisition program, just real quick, an easement is where the landowner retains ownership of the land, but sells their development rights. A land acquisition is when you're selling it and it's either gonna go to the county or the DNR. And there's a lot of facilitation that goes on before there. This was actually started before the board. This is Aiken County Growth. This is one of our first easements back in 2016. But because it was by a city and by an airport, the airport actually said, wait a second, you can't just necessarily take that land. There are certain rules that when an airplane takes off, it has to have so much room past it. So we worked with the county and yeah, we cut out some of that stuff and the landowner thought it was a good idea. And it worked really well. Plus the rest of it's protected, so it's pretty good. And then, you know, we have some easements as well too, where we fill in holes right there and we make sure that we're not creating more problems. You know, a lot of times when it comes to management, you got county land, DNR, and you gotta get entrance agreements. We're always talking with the county when it comes to acquisitions so that who would it best fit? You know, would this bet fit with the DNR or, and you can kind of look at the land you surround it and say, okay, yeah, that would go with the county or something. Counties get a lot of, from the acquisition, they, a lot of times, just from the timber harvest that they get, it's enough to offset any taxes. And we're giving all that information right up front to make an informed decision. So it's kind of the, the way to sum it up is early notification at the beginning and early, and this county has final decision authority at the end. And that's worked out pretty good. Next, the Lake Irving project was something we, the MHB donated $50,000 through, through an opportunity. We got some funding through Enbridge. And, you know, there's just kind of the picture on the Ratcliffe property. And I'm not sure how this works. Oh, there's my thing. But I can't really show it. I had a video right there, but it was just a flyover of a drone and something. But we played that at the biennial conference and people were really seeing, you know, how can we do that? And then two years later, we worked with the city of Baxter and got one there as well. So, but you guys were kind of one of the middle or first kickoff of this idea of creating stormwater. We got stormwater retention to help keep the Mississippi or Lake Irving, which is a headwaters lake clean. But we also got some oil spill protection as well, just in case. So it worked out pretty good there. A signage project, this is something that relates directly to you. We created signs on the Mississippi River. Enjoy, so the average person could enjoy it a three or four hour day trip. And we put them in, tried to put them in high visibility spots and we got a QR code. So there's the one at, that picture right there is 25, County Road 25. There's a beautiful DNR access there. Lots of parking and stuff. This is a map of where we've done it in red. You can click on those on our website and it will bring up the map. And then lastly, so there's a blown up picture. We basically, who is this, my pointer? Nope, see, I knew I'd do that. There we go. It's not that. But what is my pointer? Oops, that's not it. And I, oh, here it is. Well, never mind. But anyway, I'll just go through that real quick. It basically says on here, if you didn't know this, where you can come to an access, but where does it end up? Well, you're not gonna take time on your phone to figure that out. So we put it right at the access and this says you are here, exit here. And then it says at the bottom there, it's about, it tells you how many miles, but it really tells you how long it will take you to paddle it. Because that's really all you care about. Is it gonna take me three? Is it gonna take me 10 hours? I don't know, you know? So that's what we did there. We did that. And then lastly, if you look at that QR code, you can scan that and it will follow you down the river, just like Google Maps. You don't need Wi-Fi or anything. So it's a pretty slick app that they, they got there. And so those are some of the things we're doing. And then lastly, I kind of coined the word resource attainment. It's a fancy word to say we paddle the river and then we have a social hour afterwards. Here's from Aiken. It's paddle your glass off. And we have over 100 people that show up to that. And it's just a great way. We, we go down the river, we have a social hour and then a lot of people will go out to eat. And it's just really a great opportunity there. And then we decided to stick economic development because remember when you scan that QR code or download it? We actually get a number on that. So we can track recreation or at least people that have scanned that sign. So if you look at, let's say, you know, a map there and you scan that QR code, I get a timestamp like that. And it says on this date, at this time, somebody in the United States using an Android or iPhone scanned it and at what time. So I just count those up and I email it to your administrator or to a city or something like that and just say, hey, if you want to use it, go ahead, but I have some data there for you. But it allows us to know, you know, who's using what. And in 2022 and 2023, we did a little, a simple conservative estimate. And the Mississippi River generated about $42,000 worth of econ, you know, economic development or so. Because, you know, when you get off the river, you're not just gonna go home, you're gonna eat, you know, you're gonna go somewhere. You're kind of hungry. So that's kind of what we did in a nutshell. And because we did that, you might have mentioned about, seen us about two years ago, us in Aiken. I, myself in Aiken County walked up before, at the AMC conference and we received an award for resource attainment and outstanding economic development. So that was kind of what, because we had the numbers. That's what it came down to. And so we're gonna be talking about that at biennial conference. We're gonna be talking about new opportunities that we've done with social media. Because I really believe if we don't band together and work together, social media, big tech is going to kind of start taking control and stuff. I just have that feeling if you look at human nature. And so, you know, it's just an opportunity where we can work together. We can promote recreation in your area through our website or through our social media. With 55,000 followers, we're reaching a lot of Minnesotans. So we're starting to see at those events, people from St. Louis and also the Twin Cities come to these events. And we're, we're getting a dis, so we're thinking of it as a distribution center. But we're also with all those other programs as well, easements and acquisitions. We're working with you. So any questions that you have for me?
There a costume contest on Halloween?
Yeah, right. I was thinking about it. I was gonna tell them that somebody dressed up like a zebra muscle or something. We actually, we actually had an event where we said, you can bring a costume and make it kid friendly. This guy came up as a puffer fish on his paddleboard. So he won. It was kind of funny. It was a great time. The guy was hilarious.
Commissioner Sumner, did you have a question?
Did you say the, the biennial conference is, is cost free or?
It's cost free, yes. Yeah, we just invite you. And as we go throughout the year, I'll be sending out even more announcements with an agenda.
Thank you.
And that, yep.
Any other questions for Tim? All right. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate your presence.
All right, thank you.
All right, that takes us to the Extension Office update. Tony is here and.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Tony Hanson, Regional Director on behalf of the Beltrami County Extension Office. Just with some brief updates with you about general Extension Office business. The report I've submitted to the board as part of the packet includes an overview of our staff, which now includes two SNAP Ed Health and Wellness Coordinators, even Nate. We also have Ashley, who joined as our 4H Extension Educator here in March this year. And she'll be sharing some other updates about the 4H program shortly. We also have Kim, who is our part-time support staff out at the office, and I am also with the team. So just a few updates that I'd like to share with you all this afternoon. The Beltrami County Master Gardeners Program continues to be very active. They are a completely volunteer-led organization operating here in the county. We are lucky enough to continue to have a representative of that group join in and participate in the Extension Committee. So we have updates from their programming. They held their spring garden party in April. That's usually one of their larger events. May 17th, they have a plant sale coming up out at the 4H building on the fairgrounds. And they'll also be out on Ace on the Lake here coming up this weekend too. They have a, some programming presentations going on, I want to say at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning. Their Facebook page is their primary way for promoting their events and sharing up all the updates that they do, a lot of informational posts that they do in local newspapers and other outlets, along with other programming across the county. So encourage you to keep up with the business that they're doing. You may have already heard from the Fair Board already, but we are anticipating, well, a road pavement project that's already underway, actually, for Fairgrounds Road Northwest that will shift around some access to the fairgrounds throughout the summer, set to be completed before the county fair, which is the number one question everybody's been asking. Burl with the, the Fair Board has done a fantastic job of keeping the many different interested parties in the loop on a weekly basis with that project, but excited about that coming along. Oh, some of the other tasky stuff, we have a security system out at the Extension Office that's shared with the, the Fair Board Office as well. We're looking at some eventual need for some components to be updated with that security system. We were able to identify a short-term fix that saved us from any current year pieces, but I'll be talking with the Fair Board a little more about long-term goals for that, making sure that we invest and keep that system up and running as needed out there. Anna and Mike Lauer of Wildflower Farm were selected as the 2025 Farm Family of the Year for Beltrami County by the Extension Committee earlier this spring. We'll be recognizing them at the county fair as one of our annual programs for the Farm Family of the Year. Other Extension Committee business, oh gosh, we just had a meeting here a couple of weeks ago. We had Tara Young, who is an ag horticulture and natural resources educator from Hubbard County, join us to share a little bit about her role. She's been with Hubbard for a few years. And as a educator who specializes in a lot of work related to ag, forestry, gardening, she's fielded some questions from Beltrami County residents from time to time. She has also participated in some regional events that Beltrami County residents have been able to take take advantage of or participate in. Most recently, she had actually been up here with the SWCD team just to give a little more instruction on the soil testing kits that Extension provides as well. So she's been active within the region, not just in her county. So felt like that was a, a good visit. Try to bring things to the committee that are beneficial for them to see just from the greater world of Extension. Oh, gosh. Otherwise, I've, in my report I've submitted to the board here today, I've got a, a report from Eve and Nate with SNAP Ed. They have been very active in getting up and running. They both have started their positions only within the last year here in the county and they both serve specifically in Beltrami County. So they've been working to connect with other communities and they have made a lot of progress, I'll say. And so the report that I enclosed for the board today is what they shared at the Extension Committee meeting recently. And it outlines a lot of the programming that they've set up and their plans for the summer ahead. I'll plan to have them back in front of the board, probably this fall, to, to share an update with you all directly. One other quick piece that I'd like to highlight for the Commissioners this afternoon is to talk just a moment about the Master Naturalist Program with the University of Minnesota Extension. So you may all be a little bit more familiar with the Master Gardener Program that operates here in Beltrami County. Extension also has a Master Naturalist Program that's perhaps similar. It's a volunteer-based program. People who want to be certified as a Master Naturalist have to complete a 40-hour course that teaches them about natural resources and cultural history of the state. After they have completed the certification, they have to participate in volunteer service annually of another 40 hours a year. And that type of volunteer work can mean stewardship, so working on some of Extension's invasive species removal events, seed collection initiatives, participating in educational programming, providing programming support, not only to Extension events, but other natural resource focused events. There's a lot of partnership within the Master Naturalist Program, work with SWCDs, the DNR and other organizations. The Master Naturalist Program is a little less focused on like county membership compared to what we'll see with the Master Gardener Program. They're very much centered around county. Master Naturalist operates in more of a regional basis. And yet I was appreciative that they spent the time to put together a little flyer that I also included in the board packet outlining the county-by-county membership for the Master Naturalist Program. So for 2024, Beltrami County had 20 active Master Naturalist residents. Seven of them reported volunteer service hours within the county totaling 1,694 service hours, which had an estimated cash value of about $61,000. And the attachment that I included in that board report shows program participation in Beltrami County estimated over the past five years. So a lot of what I do as a Regional Director is try to represent some of those other Extension Programs that are active in the region or county, but aren't necessarily part of that county-funded piece such as our 4H educator position. So talked a little bit about that with the Extension Committee as well at our most recent meeting. And yeah, with that, I'm gonna pause to take any questions you all might have for me before I turn it over to my colleagues here.
You have any questions, anybody?
Thank you very much.
We can try to mind the clock a little too. We got, got behind right off the bat here. So thank you.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
My name is Ashley Rohr. I am the new 4H Extension Educator for Beltrami County. And this is my colleague Jenna Claypool. She'll talk a little bit about some of the other stuff, but just kind of wanted to give a brief intro. This is in your work packet as well, but I kind of gave a brief intro about kind of where I came from, what led me to this position. So I am not from the Bemidji area, but I've lived here for seven years now roughly and have been in 4H all my life. Grew up in Todd County, so central Minnesota. And I've always been interested in the 4H program, what it offers for youth, how they can grow, how they can find their own interests and excel in those, especially at the county fair. It's one of their favorite events of the year, coming up August 6th through 10th. So obviously we want to see you all there. But besides the fair, obviously, we do a lot of events outside of it with programming. Clubs take initiative and help out our community in several ways. There was one this last fall where one of our clubs did a community pride project where they donated turkeys to the local food shelf. So and they were the only people that donated turkeys for that time. So that was pretty nice of them. And so just, I'm kind of, I've only been here since March, but getting my bearings and I'm super excited to be involved and grow this program. So thank you for, thank you for all you guys do. Do you have any questions for me specifically?
Any, have any questions for Ashley? No, thank you. Appreciate the intro.
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Jenna Claypool. I was recently hired as a Regional Extension Educator in Northeast Minnesota in charge of volunteer systems. So I just want to point out that we are all very grateful for Ashley's work. She's doing a great job. She's eager to learn and, you know, our Beltrami County 4H program is strong, as are other counties in the Northeast, of course, which I represent everybody. It's hard to remember that when I grew up here in Beltrami and this is where I love to live. But there are several other regional staff that support the county level 4H programs. So we just want to make you aware of that, that as you hire Ashley, you're actually hiring a package of, of staff that you might not be able to see or you might not be aware of. But we have, of course, we've got our Northeast Program Leader, Jan Drodowski. And our other regional Extension Educators include myself in charge of volunteer systems, as I said. We've got David Foley in charge of animal science. Cassie Gerling, she's over civic engagement and leadership. Lori Hall is our operations specialist and Kate Priner is over quality programs and systems. So we are there to support each of the educators in all of the counties. And as it happens, two of those regional staff live right here in Bemidji. So it's a great place to live. So Cassie Gerling and I both live here. So, yeah, we just wanted to thank you for your support and let you know that things are, are going well and going strong. Yeah, we've got a lot of opportunities that we continue to offer for the 4Hers in the area and we've got a strong program here. One thing I want to put out is that State Fair is the largest Minnesota 4H event that happens in the state. The second largest is called Project Bowl. So it's a knowledge bowl type of program and they have teams that, that compete against one another in different counties. And we had, oh, how many, like seven teams? Seven teams from Beltrami County this year that participated in the Knowledge Bowl. And that is 4Hers learning about the project areas that we represented this year were poultry, dog and general livestock and rabbit. So a lot of, a lot of learning is, is happening due to 4H. So thank you for your support. Are there any questions before we?
Anybody have any questions for Jenna? Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much. Next up, we have HRDC update.
Good afternoon. I brought a little bit of the staff along today, just so you had to have an idea of what we want you to know is we want to serve in any weekend within project that you guys might have that you need a little additional help on. I've got, each one of them are gonna present for, Craig told me 37 and a half minutes each, so I'm not sure what the deal is. I'm pretty much a lifelong resident. I spent a couple of years out of state, which was a mistake of mine and I won't make that again. We would like to meet with each one of you individually. We have, we're doing the Bemidji City Comp Plan. And one of the things we've noticed is we want to have the whole community, not just the city of Bemidji, not BSU, not some of the citizens. We want everybody. So we would like to have the opportunity to meet with each one of you individually at some point in the next couple, three weeks. So if you could allow Tom to give us your information, contact information, we'd appreciate that. And with that, I'm going to take up, well, I'm gonna give Craig back 35 and a half minutes. And Tony, if you'd like to start the presentation?
Hi there, Commissioner Sean Moran. So HRDC has a nonprofit subsidiary called Headwaters Regional Finance Corporation. And that houses a revolving loan fund that has a capital base of around $6.8 million, of which 2.5 million is available for loans. And so I'll keep my comments brief here today. The overarching goal of the loans that we do is economic development and job creation. It's a gap lending program, so we seek to leverage bank financing and help good projects happen that otherwise might not happen. I guess the key takeaway is for your group is if there's a business that wants to come to Beltrami County, expand in Beltrami County, or is even struggling in Beltrami County, you can send them my way and we can see if we can assist with a loan. So that's the gist of it. And I can pick on Craig a little bit. He's on the HRFC's board here just recently. So it might be a good source if you have questions on different days, but otherwise you have any questions, I take that an hour, I'll hand it off to my fellow coworkers.
Anybody have any questions for Sean and the HRFC?
All right.
Thanks, Sean.
You bet.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. Tony Claire is Community Development Planner for HRDC and this is?
Tammy Hagan, Mobility Manager.
And we, we compile up the Transportation Department. So in your packets, there's a one-page flyer about transportation resources. Just wanted to go real quickly over some of these. Most of the work I do is active living work through MINDOT. There's a few programs that the county has been very successful with recently. I'll start with the Transportation Alternatives Program. That has a 20% match and your projects are scored regionally against other projects. Currently, there's a project being constructed on Fifth Street from the city of Bemidji. That's one of the more local transportation alternative projects. As we move across the active transportation, working with the county engineer, we were able to get a $770,000 project. It's gonna be the Fifth Street Trail. That's gonna go from Jefferson out to the high school. And we also recently just found out that the last phase has also been funded. The great part about that program is 100% funded, so there's no match dollars. So congratulations to you.
We like that.
Another, another program's the Carbon Reduction Program. The county engineer was successful in an application to utilize recycled asphalt on Casaw 32. So to the tune of about 700,000. That was just recently awarded. Safe routes to school planning is something we do a really great job with. We've done some projects for Voyager and Aurora Schools recently. This year, we're doing a project in the port and then next year we were approved to go up to Red Lake. So we're really excited about that. So we'll be doing a safe routes to school plan for Red Lake High School and Red Lake Elementary. And then the last thing I'll talk about is our statewide health improvement partnership or ship. Through that, we do a lot of active living promotion. Last week, Tammy and I were up at Red Lake Schools can, putting together e-bikes. 10 of them are gonna be at the Red Lake School and the other 10 are going to Oshki and Red Lake. So a great program to just promote active living in the communities. At the Red Lake School and the other ten are going to Oshki and Red Lake. So a great program to just promote active living in the communities.
Hello, Commissioners. Um I am the Mobility Manager at HRDC. And I am the one who helps complement other transit options in Beltrami County, and that's really. Overcoming barriers in um how people get from one place to another. And let's see, what else can I say? Um one of the projects that we are doing, Craig has heard it many, many times, is Conifer Transit. And we saw Paul Bunyan Transit struggling a little bit. And so we came up with an alternative uh complimentary, I should say. Option for individuals that live at Conifer Estates, Conifer Villas and East Conifer, and they now have their own exclusive um. Transportation option that is just for them. And we just were awarded a grant actually today. To expand Conifer Transit for the next two years and that will extend our hours, our scope of who we are serving and um. The vehicles. So that's really exciting. So really, it's just really complimentary what we have already. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Ghul.
I'm really glad to hear about the partnership with Paul Bunyan Transit. My question was going to be, uh can you work with them to? Help them get uh another bus and another route and help them recruit drivers um because. Like you said, the struggles are real and uh I think with your guys' experience, uh it could be a real asset there. So. If you could talk a little more about that.
Yes, I can. So Paul Bunyan Transit, first of all, was very involved before we even got going with Conifer Transit because, you know. They are public transit in this area. I know that at one point they were really struggling with drivers. I do believe that they have. Um remedied quite a bit of that. And plus now they're getting brand new vehicles. So they are going to be getting more vehicles. They have more drivers. The the thing is, is with public transit, um you can't just expand your area. It has to be something that is. Um an application through MINDOT and MINDOT has that opened up that application since COVID. So until MINDOT opens up that application, then they can revamp what their routes are, their areas of service. But until that point, they are sort of hand tied on that. So that's where we come in as HRDC and the Mobility Management Transportation Team. Is how can we complement them and give them other options for individuals within the community?
So how do we get MINDOT to open that back up?
If if I knew that question, I wouldn't be working. No.
Well, there's got to be some options.
There are some some options.
There's got to be, you know, you guys have relationships with MINDOT, you know, lean on those, like I'm open to ideas.
So one of the things that is an option now too, with this new funding and the expanding of service. Um the second phase of this is now we're going to be able to add Ridgeway. And once we have that second vehicle, we would have the ability to potentially run some spur routes. Uh over time, once we get enough drivers potentially up to Black Duck, possibly Bagley. Um towards the port if we want it as well too. Um so that's something we're looking at trying to do, but just trying to find drivers and scale that program sensibly to make sure we're meeting the needs of the. The people it was designed for.
One thing we are proud of with the Conifer Transit is we, in seventy five days with one vehicle and one driver, we gave. Thirteen hundred and forty four rides and we moved over two thousand people. So it's helping Paul Bunyan Transit. It's helping our community and we're ready to scale it. Anybody else?
Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say thank you for uh for the kind gesture, you know, to the school and the community up in Red Lake with the bikes. I was uh. Seen that in the news recently and I was like, yeah, I thought that was pretty, pretty awesome. So I just want to say uh kudos and uh keep up the good work.
Thanks. And thank you for representing Red Lake because without Oshki, we wouldn't have a driver right now. So thank you.
And he's been awesome.
He is awesome. I hope we never lose him because our option is that we work with workforce agencies. And their programming to give us our drivers and then we in turn train them with CDLs or. Passenger endorsements or whatever, so they can move on to a better job. And then we would just keep cycling individuals through. So.
Thank you, Tammy and Tony.
Hi, I'm Brooke Jenkins. I'm letting accounting specialist. I'm just part of the housing team at HRDC. Um so things I cover under the housing team, we have three down payment assistance loans for the Beltrami area. So one specifically for Beltrami County, one for that covers our five county region. And I recently took on a first generation down payment assistance program. Um that one actually offers up to thirty two thousand dollars. That's forgiven after five years. So that's pretty neat. And then I also have two other programs, um both through Minnesota Housing called the Rehabilitation Loan Program. There's an emergency version to that as well. And then the fix up loan, which helps um low income homeowners fix up their homes. They can stay in their homes longer. Any questions about those programs?
Anybody have any questions on the closing? Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Sammy Trana. I'm a Community Development Specialist at HRDC. Um I have roles within transportation and energy, but my main role is working with local foods. Um over the last. Two years, we've had a contract for local foods and the main. Um goal of that has been to strengthen our local food supply chain um and make it more resilient. So basically, we've been working over the last two years to bridge the gap between growers and market access points. Um we were just awarded a new contract to support these initiatives also um this week. So that's been exciting. Um so we'll continue to build relationships within the region. Um we do also within that host monthly meetings for young and emerging farmers. We support community gardens with this. Um we do provide technical assistance for grant writing and we work with the local schools um and colleges to develop career pathways. Along with Tony's ship program, we also this summer and this over this next year, one of our main focuses is healthy foods in schools. So we have a regional group made up of key local growers, food service directors, um agricultural and health and wellness teachers, BSU grad students. Um and other champions in our region. And we are working to. Do trainings for the food service directors and get them. Accompanied with local growers who's in their area to learn what they're growing and how to start incorporating more. Um fruits and vegetables, healthy foods into their school cafeterias. Um and then with all of this, so not only are we asset mapping our region, we are also creating a local foods directory and that's starting with. Being specifically for schools and local growers, but it'll branch off from there. There's a lot of directories everywhere, but we want to make sure our northern region is covered and expand upon that.
Any questions for Sandy? All right. Thank you.
Just in wrapping up, um you guys have contact points in the pamphlet. Reach out because. We're hoping you all have questions and you all have things that you might want to bring to us and see what we can do with it. So we appreciate uh your time here today and we hope that you reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Thanks for bringing the team to enlighten us on what you have to offer. Appreciate it. All right. Move on to Wes Wes Frazier JCF Resolution.
Yeah, Commissioners, uh thanks for having me. Uh and I want to introduce Jeremy Buck. Uh we have some good news today, I think, and and uh. A company that obviously is a big part of our history and future. Uh in what used to be Norbord, Wes Frazier is looking to do a pretty significant development and I'm gonna let Jeremy uh share a little bit about that.
For those of you who aren't really familiar with us, uh our mill started construction in nineteen seventy nine, uh began production in uh nineteen eighty one. And what a lot of people don't realize is we're still running a lot of original equipment, which means it's getting very old and worn out. Um the mill is proposed to Wes Frazier, um that we make a substantial investment of about one hundred and thirty seven million to renew about a third of the mill. And that really is a stake in the ground for the mill and for the community that we're going to be around to stay. Uh and support the community as we have in the past. Uh we directly employ a hundred and thirty two people. Uh if you include the indirect, it's estimated around five hundred. Uh we take in thirty thousand truckloads of lumber a year. Or I should say of wood a year. Um and we're, you know, a big customer of Beltrami County for that. Um we ship out two hundred and seventy five truckloads a week of of wood. So we're a really significant cash generator for for the county and for the state and uh we've applied for uh. With deed for the Job Creation Fund to get a little bit of assistance to help us get this uh job or this. Project approved uh by Wes Frazier and uh move forward. So.
Let me just uh share a few uh details about the Job Creation Fund that you're being asked to to sponsor on behalf of Wes Frazier. Um as Jeremy mentioned, the company has a what twenty nine production facilities, I believe?
It's more than.
More than that. So they're essentially competing within their own company for capital, right? And and so most of their, of course, uh plants are not in Minnesota. In fact, every, I think it's the only one in Minnesota, if I recall. And so we're working hard with the state to try and make sure that 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 the this plant, our plant uh gets upgraded. And that's really important. As Jeremy said, it's the oldest plant in their in their uh portfolio of plants. And so it's really critical that we make this investment and help them. Make the investment. And in summary of what Jeremy said, they're looking at about a hundred and thirty seven million dollars of renovation on their facility, particularly in energy efficiency, environmental. Uh work, that type of thing. A hundred and thirty seven million, they employ a hundred and thirty two people. Uh uh one thing to think about, their average wage is thirty seven bucks an hour. And math is hard for me, but that's about ten million dollars annually in wages. Uh that doesn't even count benefits. That's just direct employment here. Uh in Beltrami County. And as you know, as you sign my article on paper, this is the type of jobs we need here, right? And so we're doing everything we can to support them. The Job Creation Fund is one of the uh incentive programs that the state of Minnesota has to support businesses that are expanding or renovating. Including this one. Uh and the state's offering um the potential of one point two five million dollars to Wes Frazier to as an encouragement to do this project here in Minnesota. That requires a uh a resolution of support from you uh to move it forward. Now let me uh talk a little about, a little bit about that because. Poor Tom and I have been uh through this. Uh you, there was a resolution in your packet that we're hoping you are willing to. Make it a bit of an addition to it, uh because there's findings of facts that the state wants to include in the resolution. Tom is uh handing around a a new version. I'll just walk real quickly through the findings of facts that are different than or that are added to the previous resolution. The first is the finding that the project is in the public interest and it'll grow commerce and industry, prevent the movement of current and future operation locations outside Minnesota. Preserve employment base in Minnesota and maintain and enhance the local tax base. That's one. And then that explains how how what how they do that. The second is uh finding that the proposed project would not reasonably be expected to occur solely by private investment. It's a, it's essentially what we in in economic call, economic development called the butt four test. Uh that in, when it comes to public funds for economic development, uh they ought to be used only but for that uh the investment wouldn't occur without that. The third is that the finding that the proposed project conforms with the general plan for development of the community, reduces CO two emissions. Uh uses significantly less energy. And then finally, finding that the proposed project will afford maximum opportunity for redevelopment, development of the project and the enterprise. And again, a hundred and thirty seven million dollars of in- investment um. Significant work by uh Wes Frazier over the next couple of years. And again, as Jeremy mentioned, this is phase one. This isn't the entire plan then, but once you get phase one done, that's certainly. If hopeful that the next phase and the next phase will occur once you've made that investment. Your role here is to be the sponsoring organization. Typically, this is done by cities, right? But the county uh is the uh. Is the body that there is no city. They don't, they're in a township. So. You're being asked to sponsor with this resolution. Beyond this resolution, the Job Creation Fund is a, I like the program only because it's a, it's basically you get paid when you perform. Uh there's no, uh you don't, in in the past, companies will make promises. Uh they get the investment and they may or may not do what they said they do, right? In this case, at the state program, uh the company will have to do the things and then they get paid and they get audited by the state on that on two for for two full years. There's no role for the county in 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 uh reporting. There's no role for any of the financial part of it. That is done strictly between the state and and the company. The only role that the county could play is if for some reason Jeremy ignores us at the state level and ignores me. We may ask your help to get out and and visit with Wes Frazier. But again, that's where my role is uh to help you do that. So. So I'm here hoping that you will uh consider supporting this resolution on behalf of Wes Frazier.
Dave, um the, it's called the Job Creation Fund. It and this is more of a job retention situation. Is it, is deed okay with that?
It is. Uh and deed has started to shift their programs a little bit and part of that came from conversations I've had where. You know, some of the programs that were started at the state are still back in the nineteen nineties, unfortunately, in terms of how they think. We all know the job market here. We also know that an investment that they're proposing is as important as ten or fifteen jobs for sure. Right? And so they've made those adjustments. This has gone through the state. The state's new program is he can, we submit the application. Uh parameters, they give a preliminary estimate of what the incentive will be. So they're all in on this.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioners have any questions for Dave or Jeremy? Commissioner, where you at? What kinds of things are you talking about upgrading? I mean presses, dryers, let's say.
It's the dryers and the heat energy. Uh so in its entirety, uh we're taking out five old antiquated burners. Uh we're putting in one new burner and it'll all run on residuals and uh no natural gas usage for that. Uh state of the art um pollution prevention or pollution control, I should say. Um and one large rotary dryer uh that will handle the entire volume of the mill.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson?
Say it sounds like a no brainer.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Dave and Jeremy.
One last comment, if I could. First off, thanks to the company. I mean, this is a major investment in our county and we all know we need it.
Yeah.
Right? So thank you that. And then I also want to thank Tom on this. I I can't stand here and explain it, but we have taken the scenic route on this project somehow. And it's, it has knocked on as typical and without his flexibility and Diane's too, over the last few days. Uh we be, we're going to be standing here. So thank you, Tom, for your help on that.
Thank you. Great. Fiscal year twenty six budget discussion. Tom, you want to facilitate that?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dave. All right, uh we're starting our process for the FY twenty six budget or our budget year a little bit early, given the challenges that we've been talking about the last couple of weeks and months. And so I wanted to get a couple of questions in front of you and also get some policy direction as we begin to put those budgets together earlier. But again, just to remind us and and mostly the folks watching about the challenges that we're preparing for, uh there are, there are several. First of all, um. You know, you already know this, that essentially the county's budget is comprised of uh nearly half of revenues that come in that aren't derived from the county. They're from state and federal sources. So of course, the challenge is that when those federal and state sources of funding get reduced, they have a much more amplified impact on our budget. In fact, only about one third of our entire budget is comprised of property taxes. A lot of people are surprised to learn that. So property taxes is really only one of the remaining sources of funding that we have available to. Uh make adjustments when reductions in federal and state funding occur. Uh want to talk about some of those impacts that are influencing our budget this year, uh maybe more than they have uh in recent history. And those are federal impacts. We're seeing adjustments at the federal level continue to occur as the federal government gets um more efficient and streamlined. The loss of uh programs and funding, uh grants and other sorts of things that has an impact on trickle down onto the county's budget as well. Uh but probably more influential this year is what's going on at the state level. And that is um significant cost shifts from the state government onto counties and other local jurisdictions and governments. And we're seeing massive proposals right now that have come out. We've talked about them in the past. Uh but essentially with the state of Minnesota projecting a six billion dollar deficit over the next two biennium. Uh this will be a period of time whereby counties and cities across the state will have to find ways to. Become even more efficient and do even more with even less. We have seen massive proposals for reductions, particularly in the health and human services side of things for our county. We'll talk about that a little bit, but that's definitely influencing our budget. Tariffs and other inflation-related issues associated in the budget are going to also be something that we're going to have to contend with. We're hopeful that the tariff issue kind of goes away hopefully sooner than later. But we're not certain. And we've already seen price increases and things that we already currently purchase. And then there's, of course, the uncontrollable costs like utilities, you know, paying for electricity or gas or those sorts of things and insurance increases. There's this ever-churning increase in workers' compensation or health insurance or property insurance or those types of things as well. Most of the focus at the state legislature has been on shifting costs to balance budget as opposed to making adjustments in mandates or providing mandate relief. And of course, that's where we believe and where we have been strongly opinionated about encouraging movement at the state level. But unfortunately, that hasn't happened. We did an exercise recently to sort of help legislators understand the massive impacts that are amplified on Beltrami County when the state shifts or proposes to shift its costs onto counties. When we look at the entirety of Beltrami County, we know that we are the third-largest county in geographic area of all the counties in Minnesota, yet less than one quarter, less than twenty-five percent of our county area is taxable. That means when there's a cost shift from the state government onto our county, our local taxpayers, our property taxpayers are essentially paying four times the impact because seventy-five percent of our geographic area is not taxable. This is massive and there's virtually no other county that has this kind of statistic. So that is something we've been really trying hard to communicate with legislators. And we're hopeful that that message gets through because it does make our county truly unique. And it shows clearly how we are impacted when those kind of shifts occur on our county. You've seen this graphic before. This talks a little bit in summary. I'll speed through it about the number of mandates that we've had to overcome in just the last several years. We've had over thirty different mandates that we've had to absorb or are about to absorb based on legislation that's already been passed to the tune of ninety-two million dollars that's impacting our county budget. The largest, of course, is the county jail, right? Through regulatory changes, strokes of pens down at the statehouse, our county jail has been rendered ineffective and required to be replaced. So that's big money. And we passed, of course, as you know, through a referendum, an enormous sales tax increase for our county because of the needs to come up with revenue for the county jail. And so that's already something that we're burdened with right now for the next thirty years. Additionally, we've increased property taxes over the last several years up to the tune of fifteen percent just to accommodate these new mandates and new requirements and stuff that the state continues to pass on to us. So we've already been impacted. We've already been navigating and accommodating those impacts. But what we're about to see is going to be so much more on an ongoing operational basis. And that sort of requires us to essentially look at how we should approach the budget this year. First of all, absent of any regulatory or mandate reform, we're going to see local governments be forced to absorb the cost that the state's going to move on to us. For Beltrami County, we've already estimated, shared some of these numbers with you. And this is just health and human services programming alone because the tax bills haven't come out yet. The House did come out just recently. We haven't had a chance to go through it. I'll talk just briefly about that a little bit later, but the Senate tax bill has not come out. But essentially, just for health and human services, we're anticipating anywhere in the next biennium of having to absorb, reduce, a combination of the two, anywhere from seven hundred thousand dollars to one point seven million dollars. And then in the following biennium, add an additional reduction or levy adjustment or whatever to the tune of another two million to three million dollars. So what that means in actual levy percentages are right here on your page. The first biennium, anywhere from between two and a half to six percent. And then the next biennium, an additional seven to ten percent. And of course, those numbers do not include what may be coming in the tax bills and they certainly don't include any of our operational increases that we churn every single year. We typically have anywhere between a four to seven percent ongoing operational increase just from the cost of living. So that doesn't include those numbers either. Just wanted to share with you, because of these reasons, we're going to spend significantly more time putting the budget together and vetting it and all of those sorts of things. So we've come up with a budget calendar. I know it's a little bit hard to read here. The only thing I wanted to point out with is in August, we wanted to get this on your calendars right away, August fifth and sixth, and then eleven, twelve and thirteen is when we're planning to have the budget committee meet. We'll need pretty much every hour of those days in order to get through this on time. And I just wanted to just let you know that because we're going to be looking for volunteers from the board to serve on that budget committee. So now you'll know kind of what we'll need in regards to schedule. Next, I also wanted to get information from the board. And that information is really in the form of some policy directives and just policy guidance as we put the budget together. The first thing we're looking for is, we think it would be helpful for this year. We haven't done this before, but to have the board give the staff and the budget committee a policy direction in the form of principles and priorities, like where should we be putting our fiscal resources and how should we be developing the budget? Typically, that work falls to the budget committee and the budget committee makes a recommendation and brings it back to the board. But we haven't had this kind of significant kind of challenges where we're going to need to be looking at a lot of different areas. And so we thought it'd be better to have the board provide us that guidance from the very beginning so that we can not waste time putting the budget together and bringing it back for deliberation to the board and maybe missing the target of the board at that point in time. Additionally, we also wanted some target directives, you know? What are you thinking about in relation to target reductions or levy or those types of things? So to do that, I wanted to just burn through the budget principles and priorities. The first one is essentially, and these are our policy recommendations. And the way we came up with this is Jody and I kind of sat down and said, well, what are some things we already do and what are some things we should expand on or some new things that we should be doing to kind of overcome the challenges that we're seeing? We took that list and we shared it with the management team. And the management team reviewed it and vetted it out, gave us a lot of suggestions as well. And so that's what you see here is the work of the management team and the auditor treasurer and myself. So we think that in no particular order, these are the policy directives we think that the board should consider. And if you have a different idea, let us know. If you have your own policy directives, you want to add to it or modify or anything, that's kind of what we're looking for. But essentially, the first one is focusing efforts on avoiding and reducing ongoing operational overhead. So continue to drive down overhead. We've done that to the tune of over five million dollars in the last four years. Maybe there's more we could be doing there. The second one is fully financed, mission-focused operations before outside organizations. This could be kind of controversial because we rely on outside organizations pretty significantly for a lot of things that we do. And then redirect the county funding to cover those mission-critical operations. The third one is identify newer and enhanced existing revenue sources and update rates and fees to improve cost recovery efforts and also reduce property tax subsidies for services that maybe should be standalone. The fourth one is if any program, project or service is targeted for reduction by the state, then we should, in this order, as a county, evaluate that activity for reduction or elimination first. Secondly, identify any new revenue streams to offset that reduction. And third, evaluate the potential to transfer that reduction to the levy if warranted. Or fourth, really any combination of those. And then number five is finance anticipated state reductions over time to minimize any one-time impacts. As you know, the county or the state budgets in bienniums, so you're going to see big hits every two years. Should we smooth that over a four-year period, as an example? So that's what we're recommending there. The next one is attempt to meet but do not exceed mandated service levels. Unless those service levels add net revenue or preventively avoid higher net costs elsewhere. There are some things that maybe we should do because we're going to offset a massive cost someplace else. So it might cost a hundred thousand dollars to run this program, but we're going to save three hundred thousand dollars because of what that program's goals achieve, right? The next one, number seven, is focus on preserving existing assets and prioritize the maintenance of and upgrading of antiquated infrastructure before adding new infrastructure. So this means, you know, run the equipment maybe a little bit longer than we otherwise would because we may not have the funding to replace it when we would like to. So it might cost us a little bit more to keep that vehicle running or that HVAC system running a little bit longer. But if we can do that, maybe we can help smooth some things in the budget. That leads us to number eight, review and modify capital replacement schedules to maximize the useful life of our equipment. Certainly, we have targets when we want to replace equipment, just as I mentioned. Should we be looking at those targets and making adjustments to improve useful life? We also don't want to go backwards when it comes to the staff. We feel like we've saved for four years. We've worked really hard to get the staff where they are. We've driven down the turnover rates from around nineteen percent to around fourteen percent right now. We've got good staff and where we can, we want to try to see if we can't maintain and stabilize the staff by having a highly qualified and competitively compensated workforce and also continue to focus our efforts on strategies that improve employee retention and also reduce turnover. And then lastly, want to maximize operational efficiencies. We kind of do this, the staff are well familiar with this, cost avoidance strategies, maximize efficiencies, invest in technologies, these types of things, which really help try to allow us to be more productive at a lower cost. So those are the policy directives that I've shared with you. And then these are the kind of general questions. I won't read them all to you. You've seen them. They're in your packet. But essentially, we could use some guidance on, what are you thinking as it relates to these policies? And how exactly do you, what guidance do you want to give us in the generation of or the beginning stages of generating the budget? Now, we don't need a hundred percent, you know, definitive direction today. We just need some guidance to get started. We're going to be starting to put the budgets together at the end of this month. And so we can revisit on this as we move through the budget process. But to get your insight sooner than later is going to be much more important than trying to guess and get it wrong and then have to go through an iterative process later to eventually resolve those differences. So with that, I'll pause. We do have this scheduled on the regular work session because the idea was we wanted there to be a formal approval or direction from the board to our teams so that we can begin this work. I think we have a few minutes to continue to talk about this, but if you don't get through it all, you'll have time on the regular session is all I'm suggesting.
Questions for Tom? Commissioner Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, I just want to commend you and the staff for putting these directives together. And I think that you've really encapsulated what we really need to do. As I looked at that, I kept trying to think, what else are we missing? And I didn't think of anything. So, I mean, I'm used to doing this sort of thing all the time. And it's like, boy, that was a pretty good list. So thanks to you and Jody and the staff. I think that's, this is something that, and I also especially liked the idea that we don't want to go backwards on the staff compensation that we finally achieved. And I think that's important. So I think that's, I think this is a great starting point.
Thank you.
Anybody else? These, what, are you going to want answers on specific ones of these tonight or not necessarily tonight? Just getting in front of us or?
I would love answers tonight if possible, which is why I tried to send it out as early as I could. I know it can be hard because we don't know exactly where the state budget's going to be. We don't know exactly what the cuts are going to look like. But even at the best-case scenario, we know we're going to be hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that are going to have to be dealt with and maybe millions. So yeah, if you have, were able to tell us, for example, look, we don't want the levy to be any more than ten percent this year, that would be helpful for us because then we can go back and start churning the budget and try to come up with. If you said, you know, keep it as low as you can, we always do that, right? But as low as you can doesn't give us much direction in regard to, okay, what should we slash? Or what should we postpone? Or what should, you know? So the more, the more information you could provide to us, the more, the more we can be informed and develop a budget that closely tied to your goals and objectives sooner. And then allow us the backend to then negotiate any minor differences instead of major issues. If that makes sense.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Sumner.
So number six, I would be willing to put forward the board chair and the newest member of the board as members of the committee.
That's what I would term a preemptive strike.
Right.
I think it's Commissioner Sumner's turn.
Thanks for the levity there, Commissioner Sumner. Yeah, nope.
Yeah, we could use more of it.
Good plan. Humor is the best, laughter is the best medicine, so. Traditionally, it would be the new Commissioner Winger typically would be on the budget committee. And at the, and then we usually have somewhat gone in our rotation for the others. But if there's anybody else that would want to volunteer for it, I know, I think it is Commissioner Sumner's turn. But if he doesn't want to, you know? Anybody else wants to volunteer for the budget committee, but?
Yeah, I just, when you talked about what's your appetite for a levy increase, I've never ever been in favor of anything over five percent. I just, but knowing that. So there you go, five percent. I understand that that's probably not going to be possible, but at least every attempt should be made to keep it to that.
I wonder, not knowing where we are sitting right now, just with the operational increases, let alone all these cost shifts, where we'll be in line with that, you know, with that. I mean, if we'll have three percent that we are automatically just based on our normal, so to speak, operational increases, I mean, are you talking five percent in addition to operational or just five percent period? Because we might be at five percent just on our normal operational.
Right. So let me clarify that. That's a good point. So I think when we develop this budget, and I don't know how hard this would be, and maybe Jody could answer that. I think it's imperative that we identify the difference between what our normal budget would be and what the additional levy has to be because the state has done what they did and/or the federal government. I think that, so that when we, with whatever budget we end up with, we can clearly tell our taxpayers, this is the increase in your levy based on our operations that we normally would have to increase, whether it's wages, insurance, whatever it is. And this is the increase that has been put upon us by the state. And to the extent that that's possible, I think that that's absolutely essential that we do that.
I think it'd be essential to have the accounting person on the budget committee.
Better to have, better to have the accounting person audit the.
So Commissioner Carlson, so are you, what are you saying as far as the five percent then? Are you talking five percent period or five percent in addition to the operating expenses? If they'd be three percent or four percent, then you'd be at eight or nine percent or what are you saying?
Well, what I'm saying is that we aren't going to have any control over some of these reductions and the cost shifts. What I would say is we should never, ever be over five percent just in a normal year-to-year budget increase to handle inflation and all that stuff. And that's why, that's kind of my, we have to keep it under five percent for that purpose. But all these other cost shifts that we don't have any control over, we just need to identify what those are. And if that means we end up with an eight percent levy increase, that we clearly are, this is out of our control. Three percent is, thank you very much, state government. So that's why I think it's important that we, but so, yeah.
Mr. Winger?
I just have a couple of comments. First one, I'm sorry I had to leave. I got a nasty charlie horse. I didn't want to sit here and scream, so. Anyway, I understand what he's saying, but it could be, you know, substantially more than that. We're going to have, what you want is, how much are we going to, how much do you want us to say? You want the county to come in under, right? Is that more what you're?
It'd be helpful. And I know that's really tough. And we know, I mean, there has to be some trust here, right? That if you tell me fifteen percent, we're not going to take it right up to fifteen percent. If you told me ten percent, we're not going to take it right up to. ten percent, we're not going to take it right up to ten, like whatever it is, we're going to do everything we can to get it under that, but I I fear that we'll be into double digits, I mean, based on what we're seeing from the state. That would include what Commissioner Carlson was saying, our standard operating churn plus, you know, the whatever the state throws at us. As I mentioned in one of the slides for just the Health and Human Services pieces alone, we're looking at a minimum of about seven hundred thousand dollars. That's about a little over two percent right there. So if you had five percent, you're already at seven, and that's the best case scenario. We haven't even gotten what's coming from the tax bills and other mandates that may be passed this year and so on and so forth. So when I look at this and I'm like, best case scenario, seven, seven and a half percent, I don't know. I mean, it's tough, and we're not going to hold you to it, right? Because you can always come down, right? All the way up through December. You can always come down. And so if we find ways to bring it down, we'll do exactly that. But if I'm just looking for a way that I can go to the staff and say, okay, the board says nothing more than five percent, we've got a big lift ahead of us here. We're going to be cutting programs. We're going to be cutting services. We're going to be delaying projects. We're going to be delaying capital purchases. I mean, all of that's on the table. I mean, five percent's not going to, in, at least from my viewpoint at this point in time, that's not going to be enough. Ten percent, maybe, maybe there's opportunity for us to to get around that. I mean, certainly, my goal is to be under ten percent, but I I just, I don't know. I don't know where it's going to be. I think what would be more important is if you gave us sort of a target this, but definitely don't exceed that, that could give us a range, that would be helpful. And then the other thing, which is probably more important for tonight's conversation, is those ten budget priorities and principles. That's going to give us a lot of guidance on how we approach the budget. So that way, we know, you know, we are going to have to put the county first in the way that we fund our operations, right? But we're going to be sensitive, right? We are going to look at ways that we can delay projects that don't compromise, you know, quality or or safety or those types of things, but may cost us a little more to keep something moving. You know, if it costs me five thousand dollars more to keep a car running for an extra year, is that better than the fifty thousand dollars it cost me to replace it, you know? A normal person would say you get to a certain return on investment, like it's time to replace it. We may not be able to operate that way cost-effectively. And so there may be some strategy variances that we're going to have to entertain, and that's kind of what that budget principles and priorities document gets at is, are you guys okay with some of that flexibility, with some of the modification of maybe the way that we've approached our budget in the past? And in prioritizing our mission-critical activities first and mandated services levels that are, you know, not being, we're not being relieved of. So that 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 principle and priorities budget is real or document is really the the key to, and and that's what I would want to have an approval of or modification of. And if you need to table that to come back and, you know, we have different ideas and stuff, we can do that. You know, probably be good to have that conversation at the very next meeting if need be. But we we are intending to start putting budgets together shortly right after that, so.
Commissioner Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've another, so if we if if we do discuss a a number here, can we still go up from that?
Yep.
Okay, okay, so we can fluctuate. Okay, good. And I like these ten for sure, so. That's my opinion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It it's just so hard to give you a number, Tom, because again, and I'm looking at just it without this having gone on, you know, we we just shouldn't go over five percent. If the state forces us to increase everything at a cost of ten percent levy, plus we have a five percent, then we're looking at fifteen percent. We don't know that until after. It probably won't even be May nineteenth. It's, you know, that, they're they're not going to get done by May nineteenth.
You wouldn't, you don't buy yourself any time by putting this off two weeks, and by that time, we're already developing the budget, so.
So I it's, I I think it's impossible for us to give you a number without knowing what they're going to hit us with.
Well, you could, I mean, we we have a good team, and I will, I will say this, you know, I know the auditor well, and she knows me well, and I think you know us both well, and we will do the absolute best we can do for the county. So we're not going to allow, you know, stuff to come in and, you know, people will grow their budgets and all that kind of stuff, but we're going to need your backing to do that. I mean, there's resistance you know, in contracting our budget, and that's why the principles really are probably the most important thing because that's your directive to all of our staff, that this is where we want you to focus the budget, and we want to drive the levy down as far as we can. I mean, if you can tell me that, then the auditor and I walk into our conversations with the team with the backing of the board and the directives of the board, and that that's really what we're going to need because this, some areas aren't going to be comfortable. I mean, this.
Well, Tom, I, when I was reviewing this stuff for the packet here, I was, I wrote down absolutely not double digits. You know, ideally, depending upon what we get stuck with from the state, I would, I would love to see it, you know, like Commissioner Carlson mentioned, you know, five percent or less, if if, but realistically, I think that it's going to be a challenge just to keep it out of double digits, you know. I think what you said earlier, you know, like if we can hopefully get it under eight percent like like it was last year, you know, but well, we just got to see what what hand we're dealt after the state finishes their their work. I also had circled the ones that were the highest priority to me were one, two, four, six, eight, and ten on the on the list that you provided. As far as the the numbers of the ones that I thought were the highest priority, about about half of them, but but that's some of my thoughts on it.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner Carlson?
Well, in fairness to the chair, who had to be on the Budget Committee last year because it was his rotated turn, if Commissioner Sumner's unwilling to take his turn on the Budget Committee, I would volunteer to be on with Commissioner Winger.
Be appreciated.
And you have to be the auditor.
So it looks like that'll be our Budget Committee then for board representation?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. There is more time to sort of talk about this as we get to the next meeting, so if you'd like, I can go on to the administrator's report.
Yeah, if you want to skim through your administrator report.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. Let me grab it. All right, we'll try to shorten this up just a little bit. Most of it was on the legislative stuff, and we've kind of been getting that from all sorts of angles. As you know, the human services bills have already come out, and those are the ones that I just shared a little bit earlier. They're really really driving our budget concerns at the moment. The Senate omnibus bill for human services is much more favorable to counties because it has about sixty percent less shifting of state costs to counties. That could be good in the short term when they negotiate in their conference committees. Could be bad in the long term if we still need to get to a target that's much greater than we didn't take a big enough step in that first year. So I don't, I don't know how that's going to play out. But those conference committees are where we're going to see movement one way or the other. Transportation bills at the state legislative level are essentially out, nothing, nothing really big for us on this. There are waiting conference committee. There is a provision that we had hoped that would get included in the Senate bill that addresses the speed limit on on Burchmont Beach Road, but that's not in the House bill at this point in time, so we're not sure if that's even going to get moved forward or not. There are some environmental policy bills that are floating out there that we're watching. One of them that we've been working really hard to try to stave off is the MPCA rulemaking process around landfills. We're not getting much traction there. I know that Senator Green is working hard with others to try to get that particular issue taken care of because, of course, it results in the early closure and the wasting of essentially up to twelve years of lifespan of our existing demolition landfill. So we're still watching that. The House has no policy vehicle on that particularly yet. Tax bills, I did mention that the House tax bill came out. The good news there, especially since it is the House tax bill, is that there's been no proposed reduction in PILT, Payment Allowance Taxes, or CPA, County Program Aid. So that's a big sigh of relief because we were told at one point, you know, the governor had it in his budget to reduce that by thirty-four percent. That would have been a direct hit to Beltrami County of one point one million dollars. So in addition to all the stuff that I shared with you earlier this afternoon, add one point one million if that was to be the case. Now, again, we don't have the tax bill from the Senate just yet. But they also have a much larger target that they're dealing with, so we may see PILT and CPA creep back in. We just don't know yet. In general, May nineteenth is a constitutional deadline for them to adjourn. The way things are going, word down at the Capitol is that they may not finish on time, and there may be a special session that needs to be called. So we'll just have to see about that. The end of the fiscal year for the state is June thirtieth. Until the next fiscal year starts July first, of course, counties are on a different fiscal year. So when the state has their implementation of their budget reductions, it starts mid-year through a county year that's already, those budgets have already been set. So we could find ourselves being influenced or impacted in the latter half of this year by initiatives that are set in the in the budget by the state and that go into effect on July first. Moving on to the jail project, I just want to say that the jail projects proceeding, I see if you haven't been by the site, you should. It's definitely a lot of activity going on there. We had our jail construction, D and O construction meeting last week over at that facility. And there's, it's pretty active. We're seeing footings go in. There's a lot of utility workers going in, that sort of stuff with those couple of big rain delays that we had last week that kind of, you know, caused us a couple of days of delay, but the utilities are tied into Pioneer right now, so they're going to, they're waiting to do the patch because the asphalt plants aren't really open right now. So once the asphalt plants get open, they'll come back and they'll do the patching and get that tidied up. But foundations are kind of the name of the game right now, footings, foundations, and utilities is kind of what we've been focused on for this period of time. Union negotiations, I'm just going to let you know, we did receive a few more notices from unions that they're preparing to negotiate with us. We imagine that this work might pick up somewhere, we'll probably get to this process maybe in late May, early June. Our focus at the moment is getting budget directives. It's difficult to negotiate with the unions if we don't have some sense of like budget, you know, like where we're going to be on the budget, how much we're going to have to deal with, you know, those sorts of things. So we just need a little bit more information before we can on a more informative basis engage with the unions. And so we expect to be able to do that, like I say, hopefully, end of May, sometime early to mid-June. And then I was going to mention, I always talked about the beginning of the meeting, Northern Township does have an incorporation meeting, just a general information meeting, in case you're interested in going on Wednesday, May seventh, six thirty in the 4H building of the Fairgrounds. So that's all I have for you. I'll stand for any questions you might have though.
Anybody have any questions for Administrator Barry? And we will break and at, until five o'clock. Quick break. Thank you.